The Kerrville City Council is now in session. And I would ask you to please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Lord, a lot of folks in our community are feeling pretty vulnerable. The coronavirus, the winter storm, uncertainty for some of our businesses. So Father, tonight I ask that you give the council and the staff great wisdom and direction that we carry out our duties in ways the bill's trust and security in our community. In Christ's name, amen. You remain standing for the pledge? We are going to have the flag in just... There it is. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let me go over some procedural matters. Citizen, our public participation continues to be available by calling in via Zoom, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox beforehand. All of these instructions are provided online and in the agenda. If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, by now they would have been required to sign up when they came into the building, except for items 5A and 5B, which require public hearings. When speakers are called, they're to come to this podium in front of the stage and begin by stating their name and address for the record. And when you get to the podium, you can take your mask off. Public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have concluded. And thank you very much for observing this, these. Now, do we have items of community interest tonight?
Yes, sure we do. Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, council. It's nice to be back talking about items of community interest as we begin to return somewhat to more normal conditions around town. And one of those things that we're happy about is that the library is up and running again, and a lot of new programs going on, and so just in time for spring break. And actually, a little bit before spring break, two days from now, Thursday, March 11th, I'll start back up with the Brown Bag Club. So we encourage anybody who wants to be involved in that. It's at 12:00 noon, stop by the library, and it's "Nature's Best Hope" by Douglas Tallamy. And then next week, spring break, they have something every day. Monday, March 15th, at 10:00 a.m., they have Laps At Storytime. Tuesday, March 16th, is Lego Club, and that's at 2:00 p.m. Wednesday, March 17th, is preschool storytime, and that's at 10:00 a.m. And then Thursday, there's special craft and a movie, and that starts at 1:00 p.m. I think the movie starts at 2:00 p.m. So we encourage parents to have something to do during spring break. Parks and Recreation Department is also encouraging citizens to start thinking about summer. Let me see if I can advance to the next slide. There we go. And the department will start offering free sessions of swim lessons, and those run Tuesday through Friday, for two weeks beginning June 1st. Great way to learn how to swim. We have group swim lessons. We have private swim lessons. We have U.S. master swimming lessons. And if you want to learn to swim like a mermaid, we have that, too. So I encourage everybody to check out the Parks and Recreation website and sign up for something. And how do we keep all those swimmers safe? Well, we're accepting applications right now for lifeguards, and this is a great way to spend your summer. Get a tan, earn $10 an hour, and you can learn skills that can last a lifetime. And the Parks and Recreation Department does a great job of running this program all summer long. I know that we have a lot of kids that come out of there and a lot of camaraderie there. So they really enjoy it. Again, I encourage you to sign up if you have a youngster. Usually, I think most of ours are type of high school students and other area school students, so great opportunity for them for the summer. And one last thing we posted today, the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department currently has a pot of gold guess going on. You have to guess the number of gold coins that are in the jar. Ashley wanted me to make sure. I tell everybody that those are actually gold chocolate coins, not actual gold coins. As of 5:00 today, and I think we put this on around 2:00 this afternoon, we already had 126 guesses. So I think people are really interested in getting both the chocolate, and I think you also win a free round of golf at Shriner if you win that. So I encourage people to check that out on our Facebook site as well. And then I know you turn it over to... You open up two announcements from council members. I think we have one. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mc...
All right, thank... Isn't it true that Ashley, who's head of Parks and Recreation, was a champion lifesaver in the contests and all this?
Yes, I believe she was.
All right. All right. Yeah, she's nodding yes. Okay. All right. Good. I'm going to open this up to the council, but I would like to, in terms of community interest, I'd like to ask a question. Do we have anyone up here on the stage that has a new grandbaby?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Third one.
Good, good. Third grandbaby, and this one's name is Teddy?
Theodore Jansen Hammering.
All right. Good, good. All right.
Can you have a name?
Well, I've got one that will be here July. It could be number 13.
Number 13. Wow, wow.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce the Flying Diesel Off-Road Races will be at the airport this Saturday, not like I had posted on Facebook last Saturday. These are for diesels, and if you go to Facebook and search for airport race wars, you can find out more about it, and you can pre-purchase tickets. The entry fee, just to go and watch, is $10, and the race fee is $25. So we'd had one scheduled before, and they had to cancel it due to weather, I believe it was. And so we're excited about having this out there and give people a chance to go out and see the airport.
All right. I signed up today and also let some San Angelo friends that we used to go to drag races, let them know, so they may come and enjoy that. Anything else on community interest?
Yes, we have one last thing. Do I have a slide, please? All right. This is of community interest and also to everyone's interest. Mark, our city manager, has been recognized for 35 years to local city and county government. And this award was given by the International City County Management Association, and I think it is fantastic that somebody has lived through all of this for 35 years, and he's still smiling.
So bubbly, and something to remember how many years it is.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much.
I don't know how to count how they... They're supposed to say 35.
53.
23.
Close enough.
Congratulations.
Good, good. All right, now, we have some Kerrville kindness presentations to make. There are going to be a good number of folks, and you don't have to come up in particular order, but if you will come up and then face the audience, and I will make these presentations. I want to say, I was brought a mask a while ago. I brought one tonight, but I left it upstairs. But if you'll have your mask on, that'll help us. Okay, you come up on stage.
I was wondering why you wanted that picture. You're always up to something.
Well, your staff gets an AA+ for doing it quickly, so...
There we go.
You ready to go?
Oh, sure. All right. Let's move that way. Yeah, just... Yeah. Thanks to your audience. All right. Hey, David, don't get on the back row.
There's some more room on this side. They're leaving spaces over there. Oh, they're scooting free.
I'm going to take this off for the purpose of telling you about these folks. These are folks who helped tremendously in the midst of the storm recently. Let me just read these to you. American Red Cross provided critical supplies for shelters and relief. The Basement Brewers of Texas provided... Tell you what, if you'll raise your hand when I call your group, okay? All right. The Basement Brewers of Texas provided boiled water. Calvary Temple Church provided public shelter. First United Methodist Church provided public shelter. HEB provided critical supplies for shelters and relief. Kerrville ISD provided transportation for relocations. Ingram ISD provided public shelter. Kerrville VA Hospital provided special needs shelter. Maxi Energy Company ensured fuel supply for emergency response efforts. Pine and Plow Brewing Company provided boiled water. Salvation Army provided public shelter. Shriner University provided shelter for first responders. Walmart provided critical supplies for shelters and relief efforts. And who did I miss? Did I miss anybody? We got everybody. Okay, all right. All right, I'm going to... So you can hear me, I'm going to leave the mask off, but I'm going to stay away, okay? All right. I'm going to read this first one. American Red Cross. And then the rest, you will understand that the commendation is the same. For its efforts to alleviate suffering caused by the winter storm of February 21, 2021, the American Red Cross contributed greatly to the health and well-being of countless Kerrville citizens during a time of great distress and need. The Red Cross actions exemplified the best of human compassion and caring and reinforced that Kerrville kindness is so much more than just a slogan. And then Basement Brewers of Texas, again, helped tremendously in getting the boiled water available to people. Where are you? Calvary Temple Church, same. There is a shelter, which was tremendous help. First United Methodist Church? Thank you again for the public shelter. And then HEB Grocery Company? Super, thank you. Ingram Independent School District? They opened a shelter, had some water problems there, moved to another shelter, and just did a great job. Kerrville Independent School District? Kerrville Veterans Administration? The Maxi Energy Company? And I understand y'all had some real lines over there, folks looking for fuel.
John spent the night in full pants.
Great, great. Pine and Plow? Hey, there you are, man. I recognize you with the new hair. Okay, Salvation Army. David, where are you? Shriner University? And Walmart?
Right here.
Right here.
Thank you, sir.
Folks, these folks and lots more stepped up tremendously. I am so proud of our community because not only of the organizations, but also the individuals who made such a difference in a difficult time. So thank you. We appreciate it very much. And can we have some applause for these folks? Great, great. Oh, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add to that, Mayor. Every one of these folks, when they were asked, no hesitation and immediate response. And it was a teamwork throughout the community, and it was amazing to see. And in fact, the greater the challenge, the more people stepped up. So I'm just so proud to be a part of Kerrville.
Good, good. All right. Okay. 2B, if you'd read that in?
City's ongoing preparedness in response to COVID-19 coronavirus.
Mayor, council, how are you all this evening?
Hey, Chief Maloney.
Give you a brief update regarding the COVID-19. I'll talk about some of the numbers, a little bit of the vaccine. All right, so as of today, the downward trend from the last time I was here is that we have 40 active cases, 82 deaths, about 4,100 have recovered. We're down to two hospitalized. As you remember, that's something we're always monitoring closely for our public health, and that does fluctuate plus five a little bit. And then the total COVID tests that we've done for Kerr County since this is almost 22,000 tests. You'll see on the next slide, so you can see that downward trend where we were in the beginning of February, so a high of 228. Remember, mid-January, we were almost at 500, and continue to see that deceleration as we're down to 40. Local update, we have free public testing at the Hill Country Youth Defense Center. That will be Monday, March 22nd through Friday, the 26th, from 8:00 to 4:00. That is a drive-through-only testing, and no appointment is necessary. Meetings and collaborations, so we've been still very busy behind the scenes. So last community leadership meeting was on Thursday, the 25th, and we're working to schedule a second, another meeting coming up in March. We had our vaccine planning meeting on Monday, March 1st, and we're working on scheduling another one for next week. And then I have one tomorrow, the Governor Abbott's program called Save Our Seniors, and that meeting will be tomorrow at the Deeterd Center. And this is going to determine about getting the vaccine to 65-plus, the underserved, for those homebound citizens. And so we're working on that program, too. Community vaccine updates, stats for Kerrville. So we're still in the Phase 1B, and as before, so there are 14,000 residents that are 65-plus, 14,000 residents that are 16 to 64 with any medical condition. And what is added from the federal and adopted by the state is the school and childcare personnel. And according to DSHS, there are about 1,000 of those in Kerr County. According to the DSHS website, as of today, that in Kerr County, 10,900 vaccine doses were administered. Break that out a little bit. They show it at 6,400 residents, or 65-plus residents, and then 4,516 to 64 years of age. Doesn't break it out if they have medical conditions or not, but it does give you that Next up, our community vaccine clinic, so Peterson Regional Medical Center. They have 1,100 doses that they will be administering this Saturday, March 13th. This is going off that preregistration list for that Tier 1B, and it will include some of the school and childcare personnel in that, and they are making notifications during the week. Family Practice and Medical Arts Pharmacy, they also receive first dose. They got 100 each for each facility, and I do believe that is the Johnson &amp; Johnson that they did receive. And then other local sites, I have not seen... Most of these are under the federal contract and have not seen the allocations for this week, but both continue to monitor both HEB stores, Walgreens, Walmart, and then we're continuing to monitor DSHS in Kerrville. And of course, for those veterans that currently receive benefits through the VA, the Kerrville VA through Audy Murthy is providing the vaccines. Then of course, the Department of State Health Services website is the place to continue to get information. COVID-19 continues to remain a public health threat. It gives information on where to get vaccinated with a list of hubs and all vaccine providers, and even shows the vaccine availability maps. And as important education information to the CDC and FDA, which is really beneficial with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Coming online this last week, talks about some best practices for protective measures along the frequently asked questions. And with that, I will turn that over to Mr. McDaniel in regards to the executive order, GA 34.
Thank you, chief. So I just wanted to inform the council that, you know, we had the order from the governor here last week, and we didn't know that was coming. But in reacting to that, of course, in general public, just out on the street, I guess, you know, you're not required to wear a mask, but a business or an agency or an institution can require it, can require social distancing, temperature checks. So we're pretty much going to continue as we have been these last few months, just as we have tonight for our meetings. Our judicial advisory boards are actually judicial boards, like ZBA, Planning Commission, EIC, and I guess the TERS Board. We will also offer a Zoom function, especially since they have... Many of them have public hearings. We want the public to be able to participate. But the rest of them have been operating in person and just social distancing, and if it's a large group, they'll meet in a large meeting room like the library. For City Hall and other city buildings and with our employees, we're still requiring the mask for entry and to do business. You know, we hope that will change within the next few weeks or months as the pandemic is not as severe, but I just wanted the council to be aware that that's the way that we'll practice in light of the governor's order.
Okay, all right. Council, any questions or response? Okay. Ms. McDaniel, do we have any speakers on this item?
Not on 2B, sir.
Okay. All right, we come now to the visitors... I'm sorry.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Yeah. Come now to the visitor's citizens forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted to the city secretary before the item is called or read into a record. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes.
We have two citizen speakers tonight.
All right.
Simon Michael Stone Telamontes.
Hello, how are y'all doing tonight? So my name is Stone Telamontes, and my address is 203 Spence Street in Kerrville, Texas. And I'd like to start by saying thank you for the opportunity to come up here and speak. It's pretty great to be able to be heard. And I'm here today to talk about some of the things that the city of Kerrville could do to help out the skateboarding community and just the community of all young people here in Kerrville. So there were previous plans to actually build a second part of the skate park, depending on how kids and locals treated it, but as y'all can see, it never happened because the people of that generation just didn't... They just trashed the skate park, they defeated it, they just didn't take care of it. But being somebody of a newer generation, of people who are very respectful, we support each other, I believe that these plans should be reconsidered, but from the design of an actual skateboarder, as I believe with a newer, more beginner-friendly skate park, the community of us helping each other could thrive even farther, as it's easier to teach kids when they have smaller ramps, more safe ramps to learn on. It's easier for them to have fun and actually stay at the skate park and, you know, stay out of trouble and such. The skateboarding community has actually collected signatures of approximately 150 park users and supporters around Kerrville, and a community call for park improvements. And we're working with Parks Department Director Ashley Boyle, and look forward to proposing specific improvements to the Parks Advisory Board later this month. We really look forward to this collaboration and to support healthy young activity for young people who either just really love skateboarding like me, or don't have anything to do. And thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stone.
Thank you.
Can I make the call more?
George Barudy.
George Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. So basically, I'm going to reiterate something I had emailed to y'all, but, you know, the city charter states in Section 201, except as otherwise provided in this charter, all powers of the city shall be vested in a council of five members to be known as Kerrville City Council. So when a citizen feels their rights are being infringed upon, or citizen rights in general are being attacked, each citizen must be afforded the opportunity to dialogue with council as a body, as whole body. Furthermore, the council as a body cannot deliberate on items unless the item is on an agenda at a public meeting. Therefore, to refuse a citizen's reasonable request, or single council member's request for that matter, to place an item on an agenda is contrary to the intent of representative government. So I now reiterate my request to place the following discussion item on the agenda for the next available council meeting. Over the previous few months, a number of incidents have occurred where rulings have been issued that appear to be in direct conflict with clear directives of council, as provided in ordinances and/or the city charter. Furthermore, because the city charter is a document approved by citizens, citizen vote, to ignore or to be in conflict with the charter would be akin to ignoring the direct wishes of the people. The proposed discussion for the agenda would be two parts. The first part would be to consider devising a process where a citizen might be able to formally appeal to council to clarify and/or interpret intent of a specific ordinance or charter provision that the citizen believes has been improperly implemented. The second part of the discussion would be to discuss two such appeals that have come up recently regarding our city election process, namely, the implementation of the following two charter provisions. Section 202, qualifications for council members, and Section 203, terms of office. Because of the fact we are in an election cycle that has been impacted already by the implementation of these two provisions, I'm respectfully requesting that this agenda item be placed on the very next council meeting. As I understand current procedures of a citizen placing an item on the agenda, I must send the request to the city secretary with the sponsorship of at least one council member by 5:00 p.m. next Monday, March 15th. Therefore, I will formalize the request in an email to each of you asking for sponsorship. Please remember, sponsorship absolutely does not signify support or opposition to any part of the discussion. It simply signifies that you are in favor of the right of a citizen to have a dialogue with this governing body. Thank you.
That's the end of the speakers.
That's it. Okay. Okay, council, any responses?
I just wanted to speak... We can't speak directly to citizens, but to staff, I just want to make it known that it seems when I was back in teaching that I was... It was brought forward to me back in... At that time, a public... a public-private partnership with the city to create the skateboard park. I don't know how that all worked out, but I do know that my son is also very, very engaged in loving using what we have now. So not for a future agenda item, but can Ashley or someone give me some information about how the whole project began? I'm just curious if maybe there's a public-private partnership that.
Sure, we'll send out an email to the whole council, just give me some background.
Okay, all right, good.
All right, any other council members in response? Okay, we come to the consent agenda, which is considered together unless a council member or a citizen asks to pull one of these. So council, do you desire to pull any of these items?
I'd like to pull 4B, please.
4B, okay.
4B.
So 4B will be pulled. Do we have any response, any speakers to this?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion then that we approve items 4A, 4C, 4D, 4E, and 4F on the consent agenda.
All right. Okay, so we will consider those and then come back to 4B. All in favor of, any discussion on this motion? Okay, all in favor of this motion regarding all of these except 4B? If you'll let it be known by the raised hand, and it's unanimous. Okay, let's come back to 4B.
Okay, and I don't, I don't have, I'll start by saying I don't have any exception to this item. I was in correspondence with the citizen about an item on, that was on the consent agenda last, last meeting, that had a similar question to one that I had when I talked to Mr. McDaniel. And I explained that response, that we had had that communication. And he asked that I consider bringing my questions to the meetings because there may be citizens that are wondering or asking the same thing. So the questions that I asked were just if this was an ongoing annual agreement or if this was the first time, because I didn't remember approving it before. That the split is within the normal range of what cities and counties experience. I saw that the start date on the contract was retroactive, just to make sure that we've been abiding by that if we're going to make this contract and improve it retroactively and that we've been in compliance with it. And then I didn't ask you this, and you may not have the answer, so I'm not putting you on the spot here, but I forgot to ask you in there. We have the agreement with, this is the 198th. I was just wondering why the 216th wasn't, wasn't on there. And then there was an addendum schedule that, that wasn't attached to the document.
I think the city attorney can address those questions.
Okay.
A lot of questions, so if I don't get to all of the.
I'll go back.
Right, right. So it is a standard agreement. I don't, but I don't recall it coming up again in the last, certainly the last few years since you've been on council. The, the previous agreement was a, I forget the year it was entered into, but it rolled over every year. It was, it continued. But yes, standard agreement that's entered into between, in our case, the district attorney and our police department. And it obviously applies to forfeited property in conjunction with criminal cases. Without it, there's, there is a state law provision about how the forfeiture occurs. But with it, it's, it's more specific and it gives us some of the proceeds. And it's, it's a good thing. And I think this agreement is virtually the same as the previous one. I suspect that it's coming before you this time because we have a new district attorney elected and started office January 1st. I don't know why the other district court or the district attorney doesn't have one before us. And I didn't, I didn't think to look to see if there is one and it's just been rolling over. But I think at this time, why this one's before you is because we had a change in office.
Okay, okay. And so again, just not to take too much time, but I just thought it was important to make an example of the kinds of questions that we have the opportunity to ask when we are in our meetings and that we are asking, asking those questions and doing our due diligence on those. And I guess if, if you know anything about the, the other district and if we need to execute anything with them, then we can bring that forward.
We'll look into it. I'll, we'll figure out if we've got anything on file and then we'll, we'll reach out to them. If not, and just ask, you know, are they intending to do something or?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Then let's come back to 4B. Is there a motion to adopt that item?
I move that we approve item 4B on the consent agenda.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion, second. All in favor, if you'll let it be known by the raised hands, thank you. Okay, we come now to a public hearing. And it is gavelled in at 6:37. And I'm going to ask Ms. McLeannan if she will read that into the record.
Ordinance number 2021-07, an ordinance vacating, abandoning, and closing all right, title and interest in a portion of a public right-of-way consisting of approximately 8,504 square feet of an unproved portion of a dedicated street that intersects with Meadowview Lane and therefore terminates said right-of-way dedicated by a plat of a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and recorded in Volume 2, Page 102 of the plat records of Kerr County, Texas, and located on and between the properties known as 304 and 400 Meadowview Lane, finding that said right-of-way is not required for future use as a public street, ordering recording, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject.
All right, from the city staff, Mr. Paxton, if you would explain this to us.
Thank you. This is a request from the adjacent property owner to close this portion of the street. As you can tell in the aerial photo, it is an unimproved street, has not been built, and does not have, city does not have any plans to build that road. And it is also not on the master thoroughfare plan. So staff supports the closure. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right.
Have the owners of 300 and 304 been contacted?
Owners at 400 have.
400.
Owners at 304 have not. The request came from 400 Meadowview Lane.
But it will also affect the other.
That's correct.
Okay, so there will be contact?
Yes.
I'm just curious, because it obviously extends across the street also, but we're not releasing that one?
That's correct.
Because nobody's requested it?
Right.
Okay, that was my question also, or the other side. And also, on this side, there is a fence built over part of this already, is there not? As I looked at it, it looked like there.
No.
That there, what, no? So it goes from the fence over to?
Because it runs at a funny angle.
Oh, that, that may be why, okay.
Yeah, it looks like it, but the, because I went by and looked at it, the property runs at kind of a, not a 45, but a slide-off angle.
Okay.
And can you just be clear? We're just, this is not an asset to the city. We're just abandoning the right to use it as an easement, correct?
Correct, the right to use it as, as the public right-of-way for a street.
Okay.
And are we retaining an easement?
Yes, there is an existing sewer line.
The 20-foot sewer easement is being retained.
Yes, I just want a second.
Right, and let me add too, that upon the adoption of the ordinance on second reading, should that occur, that the ordinance requires the property owner to replat this property. And so part of that will reference the previous easements that were given to the city. And I, you know, and I think anytime you do that, it helps clarify.
And each property owner will divide that space equally between each property?
Well, they, they might, or they might get together and decide to, you know, get, give it all to one. You know, maybe the applicant at 400 Meadowview, you know, really, who's really spearheaded this will want the whole thing and maybe they'll enter into.
But legally, it will be, it will go to, from, from, from a title, from a title company perspective, legally it goes half and half. Not from a city attorney perspective.
And then they can basically, they can use it? They, can they put anything permanent on it?
They would be able to build on it except for the easement. So meeting any setbacks or separations from that easement?
Okay, so Drew, this is an old plat, right? So when, when a subdivision or area is platted, there's contemplation of what the street alignment will look like and the future growth and development. And it's common for a developer to present that. But years later, it may be that that was never built out and because the scheme of development has changed such that it's really not anything beneficial to the city. But it actually, in my opinion, as, as a council member, the city has liability for maintaining something that they don't want.
That's correct.
That's, I mean, that's my perspective on that, okay.
All right, anything else in council? Do we have any citizens to speak to this?
Any speaker that's on Zoom, if you're on Zoom by telephone, please hit star nine if you'd like to speak. And if you're on the Zoom app, please raise your hand. And any citizens, if you would like to speak?
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. And I can begin, she'll pass that, it's really just the plat. But the first question I had, somebody already asked and answered about that other, the eastern section of Meadowview, or eastern side of Meadowview. I guess we're not contemplating abandoning that. The other question was, was the owner of the seven-and-a-half acre property that actually is at the endpoint of this street contacted? And I'm assuming not because the, is that correct? Yeah, okay. All right, so whether it's an easement or a simple, a fee simple owned by the city is a question for the plat. And if you're, if you're looking at it, you can see on the plat that it actually dedicates that to, as a street. It doesn't dedicate as a, a right-of-way easement. It doesn't use the term easement. And then in the description that's shaded in the middle, you can see it describes it as a, dedicated as a street to, to the public forever, for all purposes noted. And like I said, it just says street dedication, no easement. So it appears that this is actually owned by the city, not actually an easement as far as the street goes. The 50-foot street dedication is, the sewer easement is obviously an easement. The whereas clause on page two of the ordinance claims it was originally an easement, but that appears to not be correct. The Section 5 clause on the page three of the ordinance does the same thing.
Where does it say that, Mr. Burdi, Section 2?
No, page 2, a whereas clause, but the real part is Section 5 on page 3 of the ordinance. And if it, and the reason this matters is because if it's a, owned by the city, then you can't just abandon it, you actually have to sell it for fair market value. You have to first determine what the fair market value is. Again, in the ordinance, whereas clause on page 2 references Texas Local Government Code 272001. And it says that you don't have to receive any value. Even if it was an easement, you have to receive value. You can, you just don't have to go out and get fair market value. And that's a subtle difference, but it actually plays a role. So this, this property is dedicated to street, has no cost to the city one dime to date. It is simply an option to utilize as potential thoroughfare. So vacating does not save the city any money. It, it only will save them if they actually build the street, which they haven't done and don't plan to. But the proposed street is actually just a stub connection to that seven-and-a-half acre property that is behind these homes. And to vacate this street is taking from that property as it would further limit the property owner's ability to subdivide and utilize in various ways. For instance, if you're looking at that little insert I gave you, you see the seven-and-a-half acre plot behind it. And they could actually, currently with that access point, they could cut that with a, a little bit of a corner. And they'd, they'd still have the ability to build a road in that little stub that we're trying to vacate and get out to Meadowview. So without that, they couldn't subdivide it that way. So it's a taking from that property owner that you ought to at least contact them and ask them about. The proposed street on east side of Meadowview Lane, if you connect those two and then run them across, you would actually see that it was designed to be a, a street that connects with, I think it's Hunt Street on the other side of Meeker. So there was some intent behind this and it's still valid to be used by those big properties that are attached to it. So vacating, again, not necessarily a good idea. My conclusion would be to reject this proposed vacation because as the owner of the land, the city must determine fair market value before conveying the property, as well as understanding the taking from the property owner just west to it. And then I would say, because of the increased number of abandonments of streets and alleys, the city really needs to create a well-defined procedure for processing such requests. Other cities do this, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Hayes, can you respond to that?
I can, there's a lot, there's a lot there and I may not hit everything. But as I was trying to listen and write notes, I disagree with every point that he brought up. I think that in terms of notice to the adjacent property owner, we did provide notice, maybe not specific notice, but on our website and we put it in the paper for notice of a public hearing. So there was notice. I, I don't believe there's any sort of taking. Staff has reviewed this, looked at the impact, not only to these properties in the streets and the traffic flows, as Drew talked about, but the adjacent properties. And this is a plat, I've tried to look, that I think was filed originally in 1963. So things changed since then. And again, staff looked at it and doesn't believe from, from staff's opinion that this portion of the street is necessary. I have reviewed the plat and some other documents submitted by the applicant. And there is a difference, obviously, between an easement and fee simple. Nothing I have found within the plat or the other documents to me shows this to be a fee simple. You know, easements are a non, and I, and I hate to, you know, you know, te, you know, act like I'm teaching, but let me just tell you all this. Easements are a non-possessor, possessory interest. So other than a street, we couldn't use the property for anything else. In other words, we couldn't, if it were big enough or we thought to put some other sort of facility, we couldn't do that. And so that leads me to believe, because the plat references it as a dedicated to street and a right-of-way, that it is not fee simple. So if you all were to adopt this ordinance, what we're doing here, what you all are doing here is just peeling off our right to use it as a street, keeping in place the water and wastewater easements that are in place, such that I, you know, I, I don't think there's very much value to the city here at all. And I do agree with Councilmember Clarkson that anytime we have some sort of interest in property, there's always risk. In terms of liability, there's always someone who will come in and say, hey, this is a street. You need to build it out as a street. So all that to say is, I think what's before you is a fair, a legal assessment of the interests that are involved. And should you all wish to vacate the street, which is, which staff believes that would be proper in this case, I believe you all have the legal authority to do that.
What about the issue of compensation to the city?
Compensation, so in, in these instances, and to suggest there's not a process in place is, is not true as well. There is a process, but I think we've had this filed probably since December. And so it takes a lot of time to go through and look at these issues. It's staff's opinion based on value and based of on our interest to use this as a street, which we don't want to use as a street, that there's little to no value, whether, you know, we're assigning some sort of fair market value or whether we even pay for an appraisal. I, I would think that if, if we paid for an appraisal, we, it probably wouldn't even match up with the value that's really at stake in this interest, in this instance.
Okay, all right.
And the question was brought up that there wouldn't be access for the seven acres. They do have access on the other side.
Yeah. Yes, sir, if you'll state name and address?
Yes, my name is Frank Galvahn, I'm from 400 Meadowview. And I initiated this inquiry back in the beginning of 2019. At that time, it was with Rebecca Pazzini. And I've, I've done the title research and, and had the property surveyed. And, and I've been waiting patiently for the process. Like I said, I understand that we're not to build anything on it, there's still a sewer easement there. I just was looking to extend our property line. Now I understand that if. Now I understand that if it's, if it is granted, that I have to discuss it or, or work something out with the neighbor, which is understandable. But that, that was my only intention, is to extend our property line, our fenced line, more room for the grandkids to run around, with the understanding that the city still has access to it for their, for their sewer line.
Hmm.
So I respectfully request that you consider and grant it. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, and thank you for your work to, to get to this place.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Drew, any other word for us? Okay.
Ms. Francina, is there anyone on Zoom that have their hand raised? No one on Zoom has their hand raised.
All right, okay. All right. In light of that, any other questions, council?
I just want to, want to make a comment, something I wasn't aware of, and I should have been, I guess. I wasn't aware of the fact that the property owner on both sides hadn't been contacted, and I think this decision affects both property owners. And I apologize if that was in the research and I, and I missed that, but I, I wouldn't, I'm not going to be comfortable approving that tonight, just because I think if there's two property owners involved, they both have to, they both should have notice of what's being proposed before, before I approve something like that. So I'm just, I just want to put that comment out.
Okay, all right. All right.
Mayor, I would just note that there's two readings on this, so you, you would still have a second reading, there'd be time between the first and second to get, get an answer on that.
Okay, all right. All right. Is there a motion on this matter?
Look, I've got one more question, Mr. Paxton. I know we don't do a lot of these, or haven't, we haven't seemed to do a lot of these. Is it typical for the city and the staff to reach out to adjacent property owners on a one-on-one basis, or do we just go by the public notices?
We just go by the public notice typically.
And that's all that's required?
That's correct.
And I, and I am not personally comfortable with that, being as there's going to be a, the, the property is going to change. And I, I'm not saying I necessarily have a problem with, with, with the abandonment, but specifically, I wouldn't want my property line to change without my knowledge, so.
Okay, so before second reading, can there be a contact with the other neighbors?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, all right. Good, good. Okay.
So then you, I'd like to make a motion then that we, on first reading, approve ordinance 5A with the caveat that staff will reach out to the property owner that is adjacent to this, and see if they have objections, and then bring those back to us prior to the second reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a second. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, and it is unanimous? At 6:54, we are out of that public hearing. And at 6:54, we go into the next one. Would you read 5B for us, Ms. McLeinen?
Ordinance number 2021-09, an ordinance vacating, abandoning, and closing all right, title and interest in a portion of a public right of way, consisting of an approximate .30 acre and improved dedicated alley that extends across the property located at 615 Elm Street. Said right of way dedicated by plat for the West Land Place Edition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and recorded in the Plats filed at volume 43, page 577, and volume 45, page 335 of the Real Property Records of Kerr County, Texas. Finding that said right of way is not required for future use as a public right of way, ordering recording, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to this subject.
Mr. Paxton, tell us about it.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an alley located across 615 Elm Street. There are utilities in this alley, so there will be dedicating utility easement, water, sewer, and atmos, all have utilities in that 12-foot alley. But there is no access on either end of this block. To my knowledge, there never has been any right of way access through this block. As you can see from the survey here, this is contained within the, the boundary of the ownership of that .34 acres, and staff supports the request. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have questions on this one? All right. Any citizens to speak to this?
Any citizen on Zoom wishing to speak? If you're on telephone, press star nine, and if you're via the Zoom app, please raise your hand. And any citizen?
George Buridi sixteen sixteen Glen Road. It's just to correct something you just said. If, if you go out there, the alley from Woodlawn headed, I guess it would be west, is actually being honored. The access to the alley exists all the way up until, I think, I think this particular property. So the, and I was going to ask it, but now I will. If we're gonna, if we're gonna vacate one little plug of the alley, why, why are we not considering just vacating the entire alley? Because north, or is it west of this property headed more toward Galbraith? They've already built across it. So why don't we just clean it up and vacate the entire alley if we're going to vacate just one little section? Thank you.
Mr. Paxton?
Again, this vacation is based on the property owner's request. This portion of the, of this alley was already fenced in on this property. Just looking at the aerial, there may be, there may not be fences on every property, but there is certainly not a used right of way for access.
So it's my understanding that the process is actually...
Citizen-driven.
It's instigated by the property owner, not by the city.
That's correct.
We don't go out there and abandon alleys unless somebody wants us to do that, and we can take a look at it.
That is correct.
All right. If there are no citizens to speak, then let's consider a motion on this item.
Ms. Francina, are there any citizens with their hands raised on Zoom? Okay.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'll move that we approve ordinance number 2021-09 on the first reading as presented.
All right. We got a second? Okay. All right. All in favor of this motion, please let it be known by the raised hand. Okay? And it is unanimous? And 6:57, we are out of the, of that hearing. Now, let's go to 6A, if you'll read that in, Ms. McLeinen.
Resolution number 10-2021, a resolution authorizing the city's acceptance of the ownership of private streets for public use, such streets located within the Keystone Section III subdivision and consisting of Wilmington Avenue, Cresswell Lane, and Roanoke Lane, authorizing the city manager to take actions to effectuate the conveyance subject to various conditions. And Mayor, we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right. Mr. Paxton, again.
Thank you. The property owners of Keystone Section III made this request to take the private streets and actually dedicate them as public streets. Their main entrance is not gated. There is a secondary entrance that is gated with fire department access. We have had a, or, excuse me, the HOA had a third-party engineering study done to show that the streets are within required maintenance and city standards. So they do, they are, have been brought up to current city standards and have been maintained. And so staff does support the request based on those, those findings from the engineer. Be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay. Counsel, any questions on this one?
I have a comment, just to make y'all aware, in the code review committee, we are going through the subdivision code right now, and this is an issue that we're discussing, and it will come before council. So just things such as gated access on private roadways are currently in, in talks, and will come forward. So that's just an item to keep your eye on for the future and how we handle requests for gated communities and private roadways, and how, how that works within the city, so.
All right. Mr. Paxton, I guess my question is, right now, currently, the HOA is responsible for those roads.
That's correct.
And they're wanting the city of Kerrville to assume responsibility for those roads.
That is correct.
And I'm not opposed to that, but what's the upside for the city of Kerrville?
Well, here's what I've learned, Gary, my opinion. What I've learned from being in the code review committee meeting, and from our city manager, is that we could, we could enter into a really undesirable situation if the HOA doesn't continue to do the upkeep, and then you're dealing with roads that are deteriorated and no longer up to city standards, whereas now they've been built to city standards and can, and can be maintained as such. There were just a lot of things that I, you know, conversations that we had at, at the code review committee meeting that, that, you know, and Mr. McDaniel, I don't know if you're, you know, speak to, to that happening, that's happened to, to Mark before, and your, and your experience with that.
Yeah, so to answer both of those questions, just imagine this subdivision, and over time, and right now, the streets are in pretty good shape, at least before the storm, and they were built to city standard, there was testing done on them. But imagine it being 20 years down the road, and there's potholes, they can't afford to keep them up, the neighborhood continues to deteriorate, people don't want to buy our homes there because of the street conditions. The houses start declining in value, our tax base just declines in value. So unless there's a really good, secure way to ensure that future repairs and, and not just roads, but utilities are, are maintained, then it's really important that they may remain public from the very beginning. And, and I don't know if that's in the way of bonds, but even those are problematic over a long term, so I've been, I've had the experience in multiple occasions where we, the city has had to take it back, and just because the residents could not support it in term, financially. Okay. Thank you.
And Drew, what is the obligation of the HOA? I, I realize that it's not monetary, but as time goes on, don't they have, or is it just now that, it's now that the HOA needs to have a, enough people to say, this is what we want to have happen?
Yes, if, if this resolution is approved, the HOA will have to have a board meeting, vote to approve it from the ownership of the subdivision, the dedicated easement for those utilities that are currently there. There is a utility easement on the public, or on the private streets as well. The city will continue to use it with that public utility easement. They'll have to record the easement and the resolution with the Kerr County Property Records, and of course acknowledge that the city will continue to maintain it to our normal street standards.
Thank you.
Are your questions answered? Are we clear on this one?
I think it's a good idea. I think that it will, I think the city having ownership is important.
All right, okay. Any, any, anybody signed up to speak to this?
Yes, sir. George Buridi.
George Buridi sixteen sixteen Glen Road. Sorry to keep bothering you, but these three items were actually very much connected. So the first thing is a question of clarification. The resolution, resolution says Lot H is Wilmington, Roanoke, and Cresswell. However, Kirk had listed Lot H as being those three plus a portion of Yorktown, so if somebody could at least clear up that ambiguity to, to assure that it's really just those three streets. The other is that the irony of it, the discussion you just had, item 5A, proposed vacating a street right of way, in part because the city, in quotes, "The city never having to improve or maintain the street provides a reasonable amount of value to the city to support its vacation." Item 5B, propose, propose vacating an alley easement in order to avoid any future costs to the public required with respect to the future improvement and maintenance of the alley. And then here we have the recommendation to take on the maintenance of streets, and will receive nothing in return for acceptance of the long-term cost liability. To Mr. McDaniel's point, yes, of course, you want to avoid creating private streets because of this situation that you're running into. But as you face this situation, the HOA had signed on to maintain this street section. Certainly, whatever funds that they were collecting for that purpose should probably be arranged to come to the city as a tax or something, in order to at least live up to their obligation that they first signed on to when they created the streets. So the properties are already in the city, so we are not gaining any new property tax revenue. I believe the Keystone Property Association, as owner of Lot H, was paying property taxes on the streets and would presumably no longer be paying taxes on this property. The current rate of maintenance, wear and tear in our complete street network is around 16,000 per year, per lane mile, and this acceptance will bring in about 1.25 lane miles of street, or about 20,000 of new maintenance accrued per year. Now, you're not going to do the maintenance every year, but it will be accruing the wear and tear on those streets. So the streets being accepted are 10 years old, not exactly brand-new, so they come in with a pre-existing maintenance condition, not sure what it is. So if it is in the public interest to vacate an alley or a street that have no current maintenance obligation for fear of future maintenance, then surely it is not in the public interest to bring on new streets and their maintenance obligations without any positive cash flow involved. That's pretty much the point. Thank you.
To that point, I would say that we're taking on something that has value, that's improved, so that we can maintain the standards, and the items that were discussed earlier are unimproved and are not of value to the city. And I personally believe it's of value to the city to keep our roads in good repair. So that's how I feel.
All right. Any other questions on this item? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we approve resolution number 10-2021 as presented on the first reading.
Second.
Second, okay, we got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. All right, and it passes. Let's go to 6B, Ms. McLeinen.
Construction agreement with JNK Utility Services LLC for the Loop 534 Ellenberger Well Project in an amount of 590,918, and there's no citizen speaker signed up.
Okay. Stuart Barrett from the City Staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you all tonight?
Good.
Y'all remember back in January, we brought a project to y'all, we had a county, city council workshop where we talked a lot about water. There's probably about four or five different agenda items. Two of these, these next two projects that we'll be bringing to you tonight are going to be originally identified in that workshop. First is this Ellenberger Well. This is phase two of the well. The well was drilled by, as a community project with headwaters in the city of Kerrville. We purchased that well from them, as it produced over 700 gallons a minute, as a requirement of the contract, which we were very happy with and satisfied. And the well is on, is located on, off of Legion Drive, very close to Loop 534. The good news is it will be on the VA hospital power grid, as we all learned about in the last couple of weeks. So we'll have a very good well on a reliable power source up there. So we're, we're very happy about that. We know this contractor very well, we, he's, he's done six or eight different contracts throughout the city, so we're wanting council to award the, the contract to JK, let me get his name right, JK Utility Services LLC. That I, I'll answer any questions you might have.
A question I've got. How much, how much water flow are we seeing now?
Just on the daily demand?
Yeah.
I haven't looked, the last two days, but we should, we average around 3 million gallons a day, so I would assume that we're pretty close to that, that number right now.
Yeah. That's amazing. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 6B, construction agreement, JNK Utility Services.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor? I'm sorry, wait, 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 wait. We don't have any public comment, right? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, and it passes unanimously. Now, let's go to 6C.
Professional service agreement with Fries and Nichols, Inc. for the design of improvements to nap wastewater infrastructure in the amount of 518,317, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Good. Stuart, again. Tell us about it.
Well, there again, this is another one of those projects we talked about in that, in that... in that January 19 workshop. This is going to be the engineering services for the expansion of Nap Road Lift Station. More so important, more so than the lift station itself is the collector, is really what the scope of this project is. We've broken Nap Road into two different phases. One is the collector line down to Jefferson Lift Station. And so it's the pipe work that comes out, lift station connects those two. And that's the main scope of this particular project, and we're continuing to work our wastewater capacity kind of to the west, and this is the next phase. So we're, the pipe that we'll be installing in the ground will come up from Nap Road, which is behind Chili's. It goes very close to Commerce Park or Palmer's Drive, in between Walmart and the Security State Bank, goes down Lower Street, all the way to Woodlawn. It weaves through the neighborhood over in that area, ends up on Powell, and then kind of daylights into Jefferson Lift Station, which is behind the CVS. So this is engineering services. We will do the alignment survey as part of it to verify the, we want to stay out of Highway 27 as much as possible for the benefit of our citizens and the access that 27 gives everybody. But this will be that, that phase of work. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right. Counsel?
Good thing to do.
Yeah, yeah. One of the things I've really learned on council is the importance of lift stations. All right, we have a motion on this. All right, we got a motion, do we have a second? Second. All in favor, raise hands. Okay, it passes unanimously. Okay, 6D.
Compromise settlement and release agreement between Lone Star Inn and the city of Kerrville. This item is eligible for executive session 551.071, and we do not have any citizen speakers.
All right. I'll give you just a little bit of background. So in fiscal year 2020, the city contracted with an outside company, Avenue Insights, to perform hotel occupancy audits at five different hotels in town. There was a deficiency that was found at the Lone Star Inn. It related primarily to invalid exemptions. We've worked closely with the hotel, the owner, and we believe that they understand the laws and the procedures going forward. Due to extenuating circumstances, including lost revenue during the pandemic, the owner has requested a settlement agreement. The terms of the agreement have been provided, and Lone Star has agreed to them. Staff is recommending approval of this agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
Are, are they keeping up now?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
Okay. So this just takes care of that time?
Previous deficiency, yes.
Amy, off the top of your head, do you know what the consultants cost?
What the, the outside auditors? $1,500.
$1,500?
Yes.
Came out.
Yeah. That's, that's fairly, that contract is fairly recent, isn't it?
The...
Auditors?
Well, and this is a, this isn't the same as a financial statement audit. So we actually contract with an outside company to collect our hotel occupancy tax. So all of the hoteliers file occupancy tax on a monthly basis with this outside company, Avenue, and they also have a business of doing hotel audits at $1,500 per audit. And so we contract with them as well. The company used to be called Muni Services, so you may be familiar with that name, but they've changed their name to Avenue.
And Amy, do they, do, what constitutes picking different hotels?
We go through a process each year to select them, and there's a couple of different criterias. First of all, if, if there's been a known problem, you know, at a hotel, we may look specifically at that one. Also, if there's been significant change as far as, you know, adding on to the hotel or a new owner or something along those lines, that could cause us to look at them again. And then we also just try to have a regular schedule of if it's been a, you know, a number of years since that one has been looked at, then they'll come up on the list as well.
And you mentioned the settlement?
Yes.
So the unpaid balance, is that a settlement balance and not the actual debt?
So the, the terms of the agreement are in the packet, but that is an unpaid balance, but we're allowing them to pay it out over a period of time instead of all at once.
But that's, that's not a settlement amount that you agree on?
Oh, no, it's the actual unpaid balance, but then we are allowing some additional terms, like paying it out over a period of time.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? If we have no speakers, then do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we approve the agreement and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute for the Lone Star Inn settlement.
Okay. Okay. Motion second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. Now, do you have items for future agendas? Okay, if not, let's go to Board Appointments, 8A.
Appointment to the Kerrville Public Utility Board of Trustees, position number three, and this item is eligible for executive session 551.074.
All right. Do I hear a motion on this, this matter? Any, any questions?
Well, I just, I think we had three very qualified and good people that applied, and one of those is an ongoing member and currently serves, I believe, as the president of the K-Pub Board. And I think in my personal feeling, in light of the current situation with our kind of uncertainty with some of our power issues through the state and the freeze, that I think it would be a wise decision if we reappointed Bill Thomas for that position. And I, I will go so far as to go ahead and make a motion that we do reappoint Bill Thomas to the Kerrville Public Utility Board.
I second that, and I'm on the K-Pub Board. We did have three very good applicants, and I know all three of them. But I agree with Mr. Cochran. In the midst of these days with so much happening, I think to keep your chairman, Bill Thomas, for the next board session is vital. He's very smart, he's a local business owner, very good on finances, good relationships with the account, with the board and the CEO, and I think it's wise to stay with Bill Thomas in this time.
And I would like to thank those that did apply, and I would agree, I think it's important that we keep that continuity at this time.
Okay. All right. We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion, or do we vote? Okay. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Thank you, and it passes unanimously. Now, we probably still have some matters we need to move into executive session. Does anyone want to make a motion in regard to those two sections mentioned?
Actually, Mayor, it's just the .071. If you'll just add that one, you don't need to take care of the other one.
It's just the what?
It's just the .071. You don't have to cite the zero point.
All right, okay. So, yeah, section 551.071, okay?
I'll move that we go into executive session four, number 551.071.
I'll second.
Stand a second, okay. All in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand. All right. We will adjourn to executive session, be back in here in a little while. You're welcome to stay, but we may not be able to come out and, you know, go into any action particularly. So, all right. We are now out of council meeting into the executive session. Yep, yeah. Back in session at 7:45. And we have no report, but we have one action to be considered.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I make a motion that we authorize litigation against Mark Rowan to recover the cost to repair the damaged fire hydrant.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Okay. And we are adjourned.